It is seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Sorry, Bill, I didn't know you're getting out.
Oh, no worries.
With the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Sir Cody, would you give a roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Milky?
Here.
Treasurer Rice's excuse. Trustee Thering?
Here.
Trustee Bills?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Houck?
Here.
Clerk Cody here.
Thank you. That brings us to item four on our agenda, approval of the agenda. Happy to entertain any motions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with a clerical change for...
Eleven C.
Eleven C, to change it to board approval of the fiscal year 2022 instead of 2021. Is that correct?
Reverse.
Support.
Reverse that.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, I'm sorry. Yep. Instead of twenty-two.
You still give support on that?
Yes.
The motion by... I had to check because you're not used to sitting here.
Thering.
Trustee Thering? I was going to say Kim, but... Support by Cody to approve the agenda with the clerical correction. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion to approve the agenda with the single clerical correction passes unanimously. We have no presentations tonight. We do have a public hearing for fiscal year 2022 budget recommendations. Budget has been presented to this board some time ago. We've kind of gone through it. It's up on our website. I'm assuming the paper copies are available also. Do you have anything to... you'd like to add to introduce this at all?
I do not. Thank you.
And with that, we will open up the public hearings for fiscal year 2022 budget recommendations. If you do choose to approach the board in public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up the public hearing at 7:02 PM.
Good call.
Cricket. Seeing no one coming forward. I always like there, 7:03. Seeing no one coming forward, there will be no comments. We will close the public hearing for fiscal year 2022 budget recommendations at 7:03 PM. That opens up item seven on our agenda, public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding any... I'm sorry, any item on this agenda. Again, if you choose to speak to the board in public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:03 PM. Waiting for the late arrival. Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment at 7:03 PM. That takes us to item eight on our agenda, closed session, of which we have done, which takes us to item nine, report boards and comments. Current list of boards and commissions. I will say that I had a conversation with what I think will be an applicant for the ZBA today. Encourage them. They're currently an alternate, and so they would be applying for the full-time position, for the more permanent ZBA position. But then that leaves us with two alternates to still fill. And we still need an EDA appointment as well. Anything to add? Okay.
If I may just... I reached out to Mr. Denzey. He's our representative on the Hannesbark Park. His term expires at the end of the year. He is interested in being reappointed, so he'll be submitting an application. It'll be in your December meeting packet. And also Lynn Leskowsky, and I apologize if I mispronounced that last name, is our representative on the district library board. Their term is also up at the end of the year, and they'll be submitting an application interested in reappointment, and that'll also be in your December packet. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, November monthly activity report. Any comments, questions? I have one question on page four miscellaneous. I just was confused by the note here. It says calculated revenue loss for 2020 ARPA funding. Was there any loss associated with that?
One of the eligible uses of those funds is to reimburse the locally in the government, in this case, Union Township, for lost revenue that was incurred during the pandemic. There's a formula for that, so the finance department has been and is working on that amount.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. We'll move on to Planning Commission, EDA sidewalks, and ZBA updates by Community and Economic Development Director, Mr. Roddy Manny.
Good evening. I have definitely some things to report. I'll start with the zoning motive appeals. They didn't have any... anything on their agenda in November, so the meeting was canceled. But we do have a hearing scheduled for next Wednesday, the first of December, on a variance request for a accessory building that needs a setback variance if it's going to grid. The Board of Appeals also be taking care of their 22 meeting schedule during that... setting their schedule during that meeting. The sidewalks and pathways committee, I talked about last time, they've met in October. The next meeting in January, it's a joint conversation with the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission January meeting. And that kind of starts that committee's cycle of activities for the year. Time of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission met on the 16th of November. They had one site plan on the docket. It was a building addition for the Graphic Central Facility up on Park Place, the north side. It's just about doubling the size of their facility. They did receive preliminary site plan approval for that. We're expecting to see the final site plan on their January meeting agenda. Just talked with the applicant about that today. They also had on their agenda introduction of a conversation about updating the township's private road ordinance and also updating the township's sidewalk ordinance. So we put together... staff put together a kind of a bullet point list of some potential things that could be updated in each of those ordinances. And just had a conversation with the Planning Commission since they have a lot of experience in that area, development-related activities, and so we had a good discussion. That discussion's going to continue at their December meeting, both of those items. And then finally, the EDA board did not meet on their regular meeting date, which was the 16th. I was told ahead of time that there would not be a quorum of members present, and so we were able to reschedule that. So they will be meeting on the 30th, next Tuesday. And they have several items on their agenda approving the budget amendment number four, the one you have on your docket for tonight, will be on theirs for their East and West EDA funds. And also, they'll be looking at authorizing the 2022 cycle of outreach banners for these Pickard Road quarter. So with that in mind, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Anything new on the Sam's Club billing station?
I do wish there was. I don't have anything new. We regularly keep in touch with the project managers for that, and I'm told that the problem is that they're... and the problem is basically paperwork. They have an easement they need, that they weren't expecting it to be trouble, and it has become a great deal of trouble. So they're still planning to move ahead, but at this point, they're not planning to do it till the spring.
Oh, yeah.
Could you articulate, and I realize it's early, because no decisions have been made, but regarding the private road ordinance, what kinds of things are being looked at?
Yeah. So there's... the private road ordinance we have is fairly simple, and it does not make clear... There's not actually a clear approval process. It appears to be essentially administrative process, kind of like a zoning permit or process. The... it is entirely geared towards new roads. It does not really consider extensions of existing roads or alterations to existing roads. And we run into some interesting circumstances. One is... one that came up was with addressing, where there was a private road that I think started long before there were any ordinances and sort of accumulated over time, with the result that the address scheme along this road is challenging at best. And it came to our attention through the county emergency management folks that basically said, "We can't find some addresses along this road in event of emergency, we could be a little pickle." And so they were asking, "Is there a way to kind of get a readdressing done?" Well, those kinds of changes to existing roads, we don't have any control of right now. But we could, in an updated ordinance, have some basic standards and some basic processes for that. So those are some things we're looking at. We're also looking at trying to better coordinate the private road ordinance with our other development-related ordinances. Private roads are approved sometimes as part of a subdivision platte, sometimes as part of a condominium development, and sometimes it plays part of what's called a meets and bounds land division. That's when somebody is just... has a surveyor redraw lines, you know, and it's allowed of the land division to have to create new lots that way. That is an administrative process that the assessor essentially handles. But we can have cases sometimes where private roads are in part of that effort. And so having an ordinance that coordinates all that is important as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go to board member reports, and I guess I'll start with trustee Houck.
All right. I went to a road commission meeting on the 11th of November. They talked about getting salt in for winter. They ordered two extra tons. They said that their new fire is paying off. They're able to put more in. Price is about the same as it was. They discussed a new health insurance program for their employees. And under this program, they figured they're going to be able to save about $75,000 with similar coverage. All the employees are on board with it. They hired a new truck driver slash mechanic. They hired three more drivers on.
Wow.
They're finished with the 2021 road projects. Now they're just geared up for winter. And that's it. Their next meeting is November 9th, or September 9th. They aren't having one this Thursday because obviously it's Thanksgiving.
It's nice to hear about the truck drivers because I know, in fact, on the news tonight, the recovery of Michigan municipalities struggling to find drivers.
Yeah. Traverse City the other night was showing on TV. MDOT. I mean, how does MDOT not have drivers? It's ridiculous. I mean, you know, they're nice, especially at MDOT. They're nice-paying jobs. You know, I mean, it just...
How much is it? Maybe I'll be a driver.
I'm not sure what they make at the road commission, but I thought it started out like either 17 or 19 an hour for a driver.
No, I think he raised the... I think they raised the wages on that.
They may have. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think they did too. Thank you very much. Clerk Cody?
We were chosen for the, you know, the state audit for the election. We get randomly chosen, so...
Yes.
Got that finished today. It's fine. Worked on that today. We got that finished. Everything's turned in. Everything's good on it. We mailed out so far 365 confirmation notices for... How do I explain this? Okay, so in November 2020, the Secretary of State sent out that mass application, you know, to every registered voter in Michigan.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Well, a lot of them came back, and then we just got those back. So they then mailed them to us, and now we have to send out notices saying, "Do you live here? If you don't, fill us out." So so far, we're at 365. We've got about 1,500 more to go, I guess. I don't know, maybe 2,000. But we're getting them all weaned out and...
I'm assuming a lot of those are transient population here, right?
It's a lot of the college students. A lot of them, yeah. Because they'll move from apartment to apartment or move there, move back home. There's... yeah.
So we probably have a lot more of that than most communities because of the university, I would assume.
Yeah.
Very good. Trustee Thering?
I'm good. Mr. Nanny took care of... took care of it for us.
Isn't that nice?
It's very nice. I appreciate that.
Trustee Bills?
I am all set. Thank you.
Trustee Brown?
I did not make the city commission meeting, but there's a report, and I'm sure everybody's heard, that our mayor will be leaving. He'll be heading up to Papa for a new job, so other than that, I have nothing else.
Very good.
Yeah, I missed a meeting last week, and the reason was I was in the Caribbean, so...
Oh, yeah. You told us you would be. I have nothing to report, but I'm... I do have a brief statement from our treasurer who's not able to be here tonight. So I'm just going to read what she asked me to read. So this is from Treasurer Rice. "Hey, everyone. I'm sorry I'm unable to attend. I'm unable to be there tonight, excuse me. And it's been a very rough week with four deaths as of today in my family. Please know I'll be watching the video when it's up. I also appreciate everyone here tonight. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving and a wonderful meeting tonight. As for the part I know you're most eager to hear about taxes. Taxes will be finished and at the post office on the 30th of November. If there are any issues that you find with your tax bill, please contact the assessor or myself no later than the 10th of December so we can make sure you're on the December board of review. Have a great night. Stay safe. Thanks. And have a happy Thanksgiving." Kimberly Rice, treasurer.
Can I get a copy of that?
Absolutely. Remind me after the meeting, please.
That's awfully sad.
With that, that'll move us to our consent agenda. Happy to entertain any motions. And trustee Brown, you had warrants?
Yes. Everything's fine.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Support.
I have one note in the minutes for correction. Let me bring my screen up. In the final board member comments, trustee Houck speaking about council of governments. And then late in that sentence there, it uses the word state representative. It should be state senator.
Yeah, I was going to say that too. Oh, we do. I didn't want to...
Read that, James.
It's supposed to be corrected in a minute though.
I do have a question on the consent agenda though, too. I see we paid our liability and work with... liability and property insurance. Do we ever shop carriers? I mean, do we look around or do we just pay the bill? I mean, I don't know where these guys are from. We've got local customers here in Hope Pleasant.
Our broker is VHS. They're housed in Cadillac. We're part of the PAR Plan, which is a state township organization consortium. We do not historically shop brokers, but the VHS company that we work with does do some shopping of the policies that they offer to us in the role as broker.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you add your motion? Did you make that change in the minutes?
Trustee Houck, you supported it.
Because you made the motion. Do you...
I did.
Oh, she approved with that change. In the minutes?
Absolutely.
You got to say that.
Oh, I... I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of...
Changing...
Changing Roger Houck... or changing Roger Houck running for state representative to state senator.
I still support it.
Thank you. I had actually forgotten who made the motion and who seconded it, and I was trying to figure that out so I could ask that question. Thank you, clerk Cody.
Clerk Cody was all over that.
Yes. Any further discussion? All in favor to approve the consent agenda with the one minor change to the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion to pass the consent agenda with the change to the minutes passes unanimously. That moves us to new business. Boy, we're just clicking along tonight. Hannah's first meeting, you're going to be treated with a short one, maybe. Who knows? Let's see. That brings us to new business, item A, resolution to approve the Public Act 152, Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act for the benefit year of 2022. Mr. Stuldrer, would you be willing to introduce this?
Yes, thank you. Under Public Act 152, the state of Michigan requires governmental employers to establish employer-employee cost-sharing standards for the medical benefit plan that we offer our employees. There are three alternatives under the act. One is that the employer's cost share must be competitive, what's referred to as the state preferred provider plan on a per-employer basis. That's kind of... that's often referred to as hard caps. The other option is that the governing body can declare that the employer's share of the healthcare benefit plan expenses will be split with the employees at an 80/20 ratio, 80% to the employer, 20% to the employee. And the third option is that the local union of government can opt out of these mandates. And in that case, and historically, we have recommended that the union township board opt out. We've been working with our employees over the last five years to progress towards maybe an 80/20. When I first started here, the cost sharing was 100% employer, 0% employee. We've been making changes to that over the years through collective bargaining agreements. In 2022, it'll be a 90/10 cost share, and we'll continue that effort in future collective bargaining agreements, future negotiations. The current employment... the current agreement expires at the end of 2022, so we'll begin negotiations this year, and I expect we continue to make progress in terms of trying to shift some of these expenses towards the employee. So that's what's going on here. If you follow the administration's recommendation regarding the opt-out, that requires a two-thirds vote by the board. The 80/20, if you were to go that direction, that requires a majority vote of the board. So I point that out. The administration's recommending that we township opt out again this year. This is an annual resolution, and so if there is a motion to that effect, be aware that you'll need two-thirds vote, which would be...
Five.
Five.
I was just doing the math.
If you have any questions, be happy to answer them on this matter.
I'm all for it.
Yeah, I would add that because we've negotiated in good faith with the union employees that it would be not wise for us to go against that.
Right.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the attached resolution opting out of the employer healthcare benefit plan contribution limits as allowed under the state of Michigan, Public Act 152, Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act for the benefit year of 2022.
Hi, sir.
Did you say consider approval or approve?
It says consider.
No, you can get rid of that.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay. Do you still support that, trustee Brown?
I do. I'm sorry.
All right. We have a motion for approval. Any further discussion?
No, like you said, we already...
Right.
If we were to turn it around to 80/20 tonight, we might have some people not show up for work.
Exactly. All right. We have a motion to approve the resolution opting out the employer healthcare benefit plan contribution limits. All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry. This is roll call?
Yeah, just do all of them, but D has roll call.
Yes, I understand. Thanks.
Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Did I say, oh, Clerk Cody, yes?
Yeah, you didn't.
I'm missing Rice. It's messing me up a little bit.
Motion passed unanimously, right?
Yes.
Six to zero?
Yes.
So that takes us to new business, item B, approval of Township Manager's Employment Agreement for calendar year 2022. As you'll remember, hmm, two months ago, we kind of hashed through this in a couple of meetings with the manager, um, and then there were several edits, the original edit of the, of the agreement that was in our packet, subsequent changes that were there, then a redline version of what we had discussed here, and then a final non-edited or redlined version of what we had discussed here, and we had, I believe we, did we make a motion originally on the, um, the pay increase? There was the one item regarding, um, severance in...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Without cause.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just trying to remind everybody the discussions that we had, so, uh, I don't know if our manager would like to add anything to this?
I, I do not, other than, um, there are several versions. I tried to walk you through what's occurred over the last five years. Probably clear as mud, but if you have any questions, um, be happy to try to answer.
Lot of pages, but it was good. It was nice to see all of that, so.
I make a motion to approve.
I gotta, hold on. I just, I wanna make, I just, I wanna have a fair understanding. This is the agreement. I, I mean, we're, we've already agreed that we, we would like Mark to stay on, so we're just talking to the agreement to the changes to the contract.
Yeah, this is right.
Okay, and then I just wanna just be clear of all, what all the changes are. I know one of the change, is, are we talking about the one change of the seven?
They're all highlighted in the side margin.
We went through all of those, after we got the actual meetings that we did.
It's really, on the, on the final from the, depends on which revisions you're looking at, there's really two changes. Um, maybe I missed something, but there's the one regarding just, just the pay increase that we had decided on.
Yep.
And the other was lengthening the severance in case of termination without cause. So if, if we were just to tell Mark tomorrow to take a drive, you're done, um, we increase the potential for that severance by months, up to 12, I believe it is.
Just saying we can't fire him without cause.
No, no, I, I understand that. I just wanna, I just wanna make sure.
We can vote.
A yes vote, every, because this is like an all-inclusive package. There's more than one thing that we're saying yes to, correct?
Well, but he already had almost all of it.
We don't even have a motion on the floor yet.
We'd like to have a motion on the floor.
Does that answer your question?
I'd like to make them.
Really, but go ahead.
Oh, thanks a lot.
Before you do, um, yes, we, I would assume any motion that comes out of this would be to approve or deny the entire contract.
Yeah.
Which, which does have more than one change in it, so we're not...
That's, that's, I mean...
And it may not be that. I don't know what your motion's gonna be, but that's what I would assume. That's what's presented in front of us, the contract with multiple changes.
May I?
Please.
I, I believe we already made these changes. It's just to renew the changes that we already made.
Well, we didn't necessarily agree to...
We made a motion, and we agreed to change the contract already.
Yeah.
We're just ratifying it.
This is just the agreement for the next year, or it's just the same agreement pretty much next year. It's all the changes that we already made.
I'm sorry, I guess I was under the impression that we did not necessarily agree to the increase of severance from six months to a year.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
That was my understanding as well, that we approved...
I thought we did.
We did.
The salary.
We did.
We did.
Yeah, and then this is just for two months.
I mean, if we did, we did. I, I just...
To me, it's moot. Would you like that?
At the appropriate time. Like, there, there's some questions being raised that I think need an answer, but I also have heard that there might be a preference for a motion to be made first before we get into the discussion, so.
Okay.
Don't know, but at the appropriate time, if that's now, I defer to the chair.
I'll come back. Are you okay for now?
For now, okay. Trustee Bills?
I'd like to move to approve the Township Manager's Employment Agreement for calendar year 2022.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Brown. Do you have something more? I know you don't seem settled. That's why I'm asking.
No, I'm, I'm not, but it's, it's...
And let, let me help.
Sure.
So, there, there are several things going on, and, and that's why there's so many versions in, in your packet. The original agreement, the, the original employment agreement was executed by the board in 2016. Since that time, there have been several board-approved changes that have been made, but they have not come with an updated employment agreement. And it didn't necessarily need to be, but it, it didn't. And then at your September meeting, September 9th, I want to say, the board, September 9th, 2021, the board approved a 3% pay increase for the manager. That was voted on and approved. And during that discussion of benefits and compensation for the manager, the question was asked if, uh, well, during that discussion, uh, in response to a question I brought up that I was also, had some interest in changing the severance section of the employment agreement. And at that time, I explained what I was looking for, and there was some additional discussion by the board, and at the end of that discussion, I was asked to present an updated slash clean copy of the employment agreement that, that made it current with all the prior five years' changes. And to suggest language for the severance portion of the agreement. And so that's what's in front of you. If you look at Exhibit 3, which is on page 39 of the agenda packet, you'll see that it, it says in the red box, this is the current version with strikeouts and additions that have not yet been approved technically by the board. And so I use this opportunity to update that agreement for certain ministerial changes as well, like in 2016, I lived in Kalamazoo. Now I live in Mount Pleasant, so on page 39, you see that change made. And under the term, because technically, my employment agreement is for one year. No action, it rolls over year to year. So what I consider a ministerial change is under the term, paragraph 2, the term of this agreement, the agreement that you're looking at approving tonight, is for January 1 of 2022 to January of 2023, or December of 2022, I'm sorry, December of 2022. And you'll see these kinds of things, uh, throughout, under, on page 40, under the compensation. There's no redline or strike through there. There's just a comment to let you know that that amount, that salary was approved at your 9/8/21 meeting. That's just being provided as information. And then you get down to the guts of the discussion on page 44, and that's where in blue, or is underlined, if your copy's black and white, is the new language that I described at your September meeting, and it would then replace the language that struck through. If the board were to not approve this agreement, I, I, well, say it a different way. If, if the board is not interested by majority of changing the severance language, then I would be recommending that you make a motion to approve the agreement except for paragraph 4 under the termination section, because everything else has been approved by the board.
Right.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, that make, that's, the last part is actually what I, so we did not approve that, so that's what I, we're kind of approving more than one thing here, if, if we choose to... That's, if we choose to accept it as, that's what I need, Mark.
You'd be approving one additional thing. That's the severance language.
Right, but a yes vote approves the ministerial changes in addition to, unless it's motioned differently.
Right.
That's, I just wanted everybody to know that.
I really thought we did. I mean, I, I still believe we did.
Yeah, Trustee Thering asked that.
It's like set in my brain that we did it.
Was my recollection was that you would see the language.
I wouldn't be presenting this in this way if you had.
Right.
I'd just be giving you a clean copy for your files.
I, I, I appreciate, I, I just wanted myself just to make sure, and anybody else that may, may not have seen that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you for the recap, which is, I remember it. I just wasn't prepared to give the articulation of the description. Happy to entertain any motions or...
There again.
Did you repeat it for me, please?
Repeat it again?
Just for me. It was, um, yeah, for me, please.
I move that we approve the Township Manager's Employment Agreement for calendar year 2022.
I support it.
Thank, thank you for that. We, we had taken off a little bit, and I lost track of where we're at, where we were at. So we have a motion to approve as essentially presented. Further discussion?
I, I, I'd like to say something. I really thought we had a gentleman's agreement on this whole thing from the beginning with Mark. We had a full discussion on this whole, um, uh, term that, that Mark put in here. We all talked about it, and we had a gentleman's agreement on this.
I disagree with that. I never said, if you go back and look at the meeting, I never said...
That's fine. I, I was under this understanding. We all had a gentleman's agreement when we talked about Mark's contract, and that, that's where I was on this, on this, and I, I just want to make that very clear. Uh, that's the way I understood this. We were all happy with Mark. We had an understanding of the terminology that was gonna be put in this. Mark told us the terminology that was gonna be put in. It was made very clear. Thank you. That's all I want, that's all I want to say.
I, I will say that, um, I think the majority of the board, that was true. I, I did absolutely hear Trustee Thering's concerns about wanting to see the language, which is why we didn't approve that language at that time.
Right.
But I, I would also agree with Trustee Brown in that it was kind of a gentleman's handshake, um, in general on that, that we had, unless there were issues with it, we would move forward with it.
I mean, I, I, it's not that I disagreed with what we're doing here. I just wanted to make sure exactly what it was. It was more than one thing. And if you go back and look at the meeting, I think you're gonna find that. I never, it's, it's called a negotiation. He, he presented something that he was interested in, and that was that.
If we don't have any further discussion, we can go to a roll call.
You calling the vote?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the contract as presented. Clerk Cody, would you give us a roll call vote?
Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
All yeses, 6/0.
I just looked at the minutes on that. On that night, and it says, so this would have been September 9th. It said, uh, motion for Brown moved Houck's order to support the approval of a 3% increase for Township Manager back to January 1st, 2022. So that's just what it said in the minutes from the meeting, or from our...
Right. We never took action on the severance because we...
Yeah.
We were willing to wait to see the language, so. All right, so motion to approve Manager's contract for year 2022 approves unanimously. Thank you, Mark, for negotiating with us.
Thank you for the consideration, the approval. Appreciate it.
Uh, that takes us to item 11C, uh, board approval of fiscal year 21 budget amendment number four. Would you like to introduce this?
Certainly. The, uh, we amend budgets through, throughout the year. Um, at a minimum, we'll amend them two times, once at mid-year and once closer to the end of the year. There are occasions where we'll amend the budget outside of those, uh, minimum timeframes, depending on what the issue or the situation is. So that's why this is labeled number four. The, um, budget amendments are required under the Uniform Budget Act when it is anticipated or known that, um, budgeted revenues or budgeted expenses are likely to come in more or less than what the budget is reflecting at that point in time. In addition to the statutory requirement, um, budget amendments also make a lot of sense from an administrative or operational perspective, particularly the ones at mid-year. If you know, for instance, that there's been a shock to the system, and you're gonna lose a lot of revenue, it's best to recognize those kinds of things, um, as early as possible, and that gives the organization as much time as possible to make operational changes so that the organization is operating within its means. That's the fundamental reason why we do these kinds of things. Um, we are asking the board to consider amending the budgets for the General Fund, the Fire Fund, the East DDA Fund, the West DDA Fund, the Sewer and Water Funds, with the understanding that the approval of the East and West DDA Funds would be conditional on the EDA Board's approval at their November 30th meeting. To recap at a, at a very high level, there's, there's detail in the memo. There's more detail in the numerical spreadsheets at a line item level, if you're interested in that, but at a, at a, at a fund level, in the General Fund, the, and, and this is the sum of all the various pluses and minuses of the line items. In the General Fund, at the, in, in terms of revenue, the amendment nets to an increase in revenue of a little over $2,000, $2,355. On the expenditure side, the various, uh, pluses and minuses at a fund level net to a reduction of expenses of $454,000. The net impact of the budget amendment on the fund balance of the General Fund would be to increase the projected year-end fund balance by $456,000 compared to the current... compared to the current amended budget. At the, on the Fire Fund, revenues decreasing by $25,950, expenditures increasing by $25,000. A net impact on the fund balance in the Fire Fund is de minimis at less than $1,000. At the East DDA Fund, at the fund level, no change in revenues in this budget amendment. On the expenditure side, primarily in the Economic Development Department, the total expenditures at the fund level are decreasing by $529,000 in this budget amendment for a net impact on the projected year-end fund balance compared to the existing amended budget, increasing that fund balance by $529,000. On the West DDA Fund level, revenues increasing by $4,000, expenditures decreasing by $674,000 and some change, resulting in a net impact to the fund balance, increasing that fund balance by $678,000 compared to the existing projected year-end fund balance. On the Sewer Fund, revenues through this budget amendment, various line items, some increasing, some decreasing. This amendment reflects a decrease in revenue of $171,000, expenses decreasing by a little over $1,400,000, resulting in a net impact on the year-end fund balance compared to the current amended budget, increasing that fund balance by a little over $1.2 million. That was the Sewer Fund.
What was the big difference there?
It's almost all related to capital projects that were not
Oh, done, not done.
Done in '21. And so we're removing them from the '21.
Okay, that makes sense.
And you, you see them in the '22.
Okay, good, that makes sense.
Factor truck being one of those, too. Even though we've ordered it.
Even though we've, we approved it, we've ordered it. We amended the budget earlier in the year to spend the money. Having said all that, since we are not expecting receipt of the truck till mid-year 2022, we won't actually be cutting the check till 2022. So we, so from an accounting perspective, we're removing it from the budget because we're not anticipating the expenses in FY '21.
I'm sure the tires are out on the Pacific Ocean somewhere.
On the Water Fund, at a fund level, revenues decreasing by a little over $8,000, expenses decreasing by $428,000 and some change. The net impact to the total fund bottom line is to increase projected year-end fund balance by $420,000 compared to the existing amended budget. Again, just in the interest of brevity and time, there is a fair amount of detail in the Request for Board Action memo that's in front of you. If that didn't satisfy you, you can go to the Line Item Detail, the worksheets that are between pages approximately 64 and 78 to get the granular. We'd be happy to answer any questions at whatever level you may have.
That was streamlined pretty good, I think.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve of the fiscal year 2021 Budget Amendment Number Four for the General Fund, Fire Fund, East DDA Fund, West DDA Fund, Sewer Fund, and Water Fund with approval of the East DDA Fund and the West DDA Fund budget conditional on the EDA Board's approval at their meeting on November 30, 2021.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Bill. Any other discussion?
Yes. Manager Stooldryer, I wonder why the sidewalks were delayed? That's only, I mean, it's just a general question. I mean, obviously, just curious.
Two, two primary reasons. One, lack easements. But more importantly than that is the internal production capacity to get that work done. We, we just ran out of time and internal resources to finish that.
So the West DDA sidewalk project, isn't that going to be on Lincoln Road?
Yes.
Okay, and so is that going to be done in 2022 for sure, or is that a priority?
Lincoln Road is a priority in
Okay.
In 2022 now. There is close to $500,000 in sidewalk improvements. And this road right out here from Luxe down is a priority.
Thank you very much, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Clerk Cody, would you give us a roll call vote on approval of the fiscal 21 Budget Amendment Number Four?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Trustee Bill?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Trustee Theron?
Yes.
Six yeses, all of us.
Thank you. Motion to approve the Budget Amendment Number Four for fiscal year 21 passes unanimously. That brings us to item, excuse me, 11D, Policy Governance 3.8, Board Committee Priceline, Policy Governance 3.9, Board Committee Structure. And I'm sure you all have seen in your packet what this section of our policy governance is. Mr. Stooldryer, do you have anything to add to this?
I did combine two policies that often, each policy you look at is reviewed independently in separate action in your agenda and your discussion. Because these two policies, 3.8 and 3.9 are so closely aligned, I did include them as a single item for your consideration. I will point out that, to my knowledge, there is no committee that exists right now. So from that perspective, I'm, I'm not sure there's anything for you to really consider. Can't validate a negative, I don't think.
Yeah, we, we have one committee, but it stands at the pleasure of the Plenary Commission versus the Board of Trustees in that case.
And that one is defined by ordinance. This document, I don't believe, is, is the intent of your policy is not to address boards or committees, whatever they might be called, that are created by ordinance. They would be more ad hoc committees.
And just for newer board members, we did have a Sustainability Committee that stood up for probably, I'm going to guess here, seven years?
Something like that.
Something like that. They're actually the ones that initiated, initiated the cleanup day for the township.
Awesome.
That was then taken over by staff primarily and, but that did stand for some time. I think they were actually stood up prior to maybe this, this document here. But nonetheless, they did some work for a while. I'm not sure I really ever understood their full charge. But I lifted it up because it is a point of interest.
Thank you.
So with that, I think Mr. Stooldryer's comments are interesting that we don't have any committees, other than the Sustainability Committee, which has been disbanded at this point. But, so I'll ask, you feel we're in compliance?
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Probably all we need to do on this one, right? Okay.
I believe so.
With no objection, we'll move on then.
Sounds good.
Okay. That brings us to item 12 on our agenda, Extended Public Comment. Extended Public Comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If anybody comes forward, please state your name and address for the record. Did I miss something?
No.
Okay. And with that, we'll open up Extended Public Comment at 7:55 PM. Is anybody in a hurry to get home this evening?
No.
Okay, great.
Always.
Always? I, I always think someone's going to open that door and I want to give them the opportunity to speak. I get to get ready at the right time.
Public, please come.
I know, please.
Come on, public, let's do this.
But seeing no one coming forward, we'll close Extended Public Comment at 7:55 PM. That brings us to item 13 on our agenda, Manager's Comments. Mr. Stooldryer, you have your floor.
Thank you. I do have just a couple simple ones. The name tags, we are in the process of forwarding magnetic name tags for all of you. So we'll distribute those once they get in. We did receive the first payment of the ARPA monies, the $727,000. It's in the checking accounts, being accounted for per the rules issued by Treasury. You're not going to see that in your budget amendment. You're not going to see it in FY '22 budget, but those monies have been received. The we were not, we, we applied for two, two, two percent grant. We made two two percent grant applications. We were not awarded either of those, so I wanted to let you know that.
What were those for again? Pump station?
One was the pump station.
Eleven.
And the other one was $100,000 towards one of the pumps that wastewater, might have been the trash pump that was, that was initially, that was recently purchased. But we were not awarded either of those. We were in the process of applying for a two percent grant for Mission Road north of the roundabout. And then on that day, we received notice from Representative Houck that the state was going to fund that, so we pulled that application back. I'm assuming that would have been awarded, but did want to make you aware of that.
Do you get any feedback as to why we didn't get that, or?
No.
No.
We normally don't at the administrative level, I'll say. The way we knew we didn't get an award was we were not invited to the
Award thing.
To the award thing. And I do think that there are opportunities, particularly maybe for the tribal liaison, to make those kind of inquiries. I know Norm would use to in the past and kind of offline, so that
Sure.
They posted in their Facebook page, the who got awarded and how much and everything like that.
They posted the ones that received it, how much, what the project name was. But they don't discuss applications.
The township wasn't on the list, if you
They don't discuss applications that were not approved.
Of course.
The, the other thing is, I think maybe at that same September meeting, we had a closed session regarding Tolus, showed pictures of a bunch of mess. And we indicated we were going to be pushing hard to try to get that resolved. So we made various motions to accelerate when we could get in front of the judge to discuss these, this matter. And that hearing was today. And the hearing was to consider our emergency motion to have the property properly secured. We were looking for summary disposition, rule in our favor, clean it up. And we were also asking that they accelerate the hearing schedule, which would have meant they would have held that hearing all today. So the judge was considering that. We had representatives of administrative and legal at the hearing. At the end of the day, the court decided to adjourn the hearing without making any rulings. The court did say that they would be issuing a new hearing date. The court, either formally or strongly, informally, is requiring the parties to meet at the property so another inspection can be done. The, I guess it's the plaintiff, was claiming that much of the progress that we wanted to see done had been done since their last site visit. So the judge is saying, folks, go out there and look, see what the status of it is and come to an agreement, get this thing settled. It's not the type of thing the judge, you know, likes. They, in their minds, more important things to do, I guess. So we'll do that. And we'll confirm that what their attorney was saying in that the deck's been cleared off, all the other debris has been removed. The only thing in the hole is a steel beam and some concrete. And so parties go out, check it out again and see if you can reach agreement. So we'll go through that exercise and, but I wanted to get you an update on that.
May I? I thought part of the other goal, at least in the short term, was to have fencing or some kind of barrier, right, as well?
Yes, he did, he, he did not, we requested, I forget what the wording was, but part of the emergency motion was to secure the property with legitimate fencing. According to our attorney, the judge described the existing fence as, and I can't repeat it here, but as a fence that was not appropriate. So we recognized, looking at the pictures, that the snow fence is not securing the thing. But there are certain rules that the court has to follow. One of them had to do with how much time they can spend on an emergency matter like this. And they were kind of running up against that, I think. So they adjourned, adjourned the hearing. But I think it's clear, we've gotten their attention according to their attorney. We should be pretty close to having this resolved even as it sits right tonight. So we'll follow up and I'll let you know what the final resolution on that is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then I also wanted to check with the board. I had sent out a note to the board after the last meeting, or maybe two meetings ago, with a list of questions that I thought ought to be posed to the Road Commission. And I just wanted to check with the board. The letter to the Road Commission has not gone out because I wanted to make sure that, I said at the meeting that I would distribute those questions to the board and you could add to the
I thought those were all thoughtful questions and I think that's perfect, really.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty exhaustive. I, I really liked the questions. In fact, some of those being follow-up questions, depending on the answer to the prior one. I thought it was a good list and it was on my notes to make sure we gave you approval to move forward with that or not, based on, everybody had a chance to read those, correct?
Yep. I liked it. I'd say go.
So I think logistically or procedurally, we will send a letter to the board or to the Road Commission. We'll have those questions with the holidays and the calendaring and being given somebody a reasonable amount of time to come to the board, develop responses. I do not see that happening before year end. And so the board will be, I think, left with a decision come budget approval time as to whether or not you want that money in the 2022 budget that currently exists there, that was part of the recommended budget, or you may want to remove that funding pending the meeting with the Road Commission. It can always be restored, but I think you'll want to consider how you want to handle that move forward at your December meeting.
Well, we'll have a December 8 meeting. They'll have a December 9 meeting and then their next meeting won't be until January 13 after our December 12, or after our January 12 meeting. after our December 12, or after our January 12th meeting.
So I'll get all that figured out. We just have, we have one meeting in December, I want to say it's the 15th.
Oh, wait, yeah, ours is the 15th, I'm sorry. We only have one meeting in December yet.
So, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. That brings us, any questions that we didn't cover already? All right, that brings us to final board member comment, item 14 on the agenda. I'll start on the other side with Trustee Brown.
I'm outside, I have nothing to say.
Trustee Bills.
I would just like everybody on the board to know that I am thankful and grateful to be on this board with you all. I think it's great, and it's a really great opportunity for me. Also, with the numbers of COVID patients basically doubling every week, one of my best friends from high school is on a ventilator right now, so it's just, I think that Supervisor Milkie's email to us was kind of interesting. We might want to consider either going back to Zoom meetings or hybrid meetings. I don't think the public is prepared to come to a meeting or go anywhere at this point. My patients really just don't want to leave the house. So I'm just saying that it may be something we want to look at, and that's all I've got. But happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. Trustee Thering.
I would like to thank Manager Stuhl-Dreyer and the Finance Director, Sherry Teal. After the last meeting, I actually approached Mark about questions on the budget, and they made some time, both of them made some time for me last Thursday, and we spent from like 3:30 to after 6:30 talking about the budget, and I just want, Mark, thank you, and Sherry, who's not here, thank you for the time and patience they had going over the budget with me, so thank you.
My pleasure, thank you. Trustee Halk?
I have a couple things. I have an appeal to college students. I don't know what's going on here lately, but it just seems like so many businesses are in need of employees that, in my opinion, used to be college students. Last night, my wife and I went to two restaurants. They're closed because they've got no help. Traditionally, they were college students that worked at those restaurants at night. Hardware stores, everywhere you go. This past summer, we had problems finding people to mow our lawns and stuff. The county parks, they have problems finding people. It just seems like everybody, my question is, where are all these college students? I mean, get off your TV, get out. The people that you meet when you're working on these part-time jobs could be your key to your future. It just seems so weird to me that everybody's got help wanted ads, and there's just, where is everybody? I just don't understand it. Another thing I was going to talk about is 2% requests. I know we're starting tonight, we're starting our second year on this board. I'm not sure, like, some of these 2% requests, when we're going for sewer pumps and stuff, if there are, maybe it's reasons that we aren't getting approved, maybe we need to go for more, for things that help out the whole community. I know, I know I'm going to bring this up again, and maybe people don't agree. We own a few acres on the south side of town that we took a tour. We've got three years on this board where we could build a park out there. I mean, it's, it would be, like Mark said, it could be a trailhead for the Rails to Trails. We could have some rustic campsites out there. People want to ride their bike, go back there and get in a rustic campsite. There's plenty of area back there. I think we need to get the ball rolling on some stuff like this. Brian talked about a new township hall. I mean, I agree, we need to look to the future. So we've got three more years to put our mark on this township, so, you know, who knows? We might have more if we all go for reelection and get reelected again, but for right now, we have three more years to put our mark on this township, so let's do it. Let's, let's do something that benefits the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Halk. Kirk Cody?
I want to comment on my previous comment. Not all those letters that came back have to be mailed out, notifications, I don't want y'all to think that. A lot of them have already entered their stuff into the system as moved out, they just don't live here anymore, so we just put those separate. I just don't want you to think that all these thousands coming back haven't changed anything. So some of them moved, some of them, you know, have to be sent notices to see if they've moved. I mean, just, I don't want everybody to think that we're just sending them all notices like a second time or something, but, yeah. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Township Hall, just for clarity, my thoughts on that were long-term thinking, that we need to not move out next week or next month, but understand what our long-term plan is regarding our facilities. Trustee Bills brought up an email I had sent out today regarding advisory by the Michigan Health Department that people wear masks in gatherings, basically indoors, anybody over the age of two. And, you know, I've, I've made comments here before that maybe we reconsider going back to virtual, I don't know if that's going to be an option after the new year even for us, but I hadn't really thought about the way you said it, and I appreciate the perspective, which is, my thoughts have been centered around public health, meaning the health and safety of us, the staff, and the public being here, but I didn't think as much about the fact that some people may not attend because they don't feel comfortable. And I appreciate that perspective, so thanks for making me think of it that way. And I'd like to say, you know, keep your thoughts in for our treasurer, she's had a rough week, if you can give her a leg up, a little support, I'm sure she needs it right now, and I hope you're all able to spend Thanksgiving with some people that you love, because that's most important. And with that, we'll entertain any motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move to adjourn?
Score.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Why is it always unanimous?